Councilor Woodruff?
Here.
Mayor Procham Bule? Councilor Yasi?
Here.
Mayor Youssef?
Here, thank you. All right, moving right into our agenda. We start with council review of the agendas. Looking at twelve five two thousand twenty-three. Our next city council study session. I have no problem with this agenda. It looks good to me. How about everybody else?
Just an update on that, Mayor and Council. We may be shifting that a bit around.
Okay.
Uh, for sure, having the fair share program proposal being on there. We have a person coming in from out of town. But I need to haven't had a chance to cuddle up with Mark, but we probably want to keep that open for possible municipal court judge interviews. Understanding how hard December can be to get all of you together. So we will have that one portion into it, but we'd like to save some of that time. To ensure that you have enough time to interview candidates on that date, if so, going through it. I know. Mark's getting the applicants in to help in that portion. So we'll have more information on it, but just wanted to put an asterix on it. That for sure, we would have the fair share program proposal, but the other two things may get pushed.
Excellent, thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Woodruff and Yasi? Great, okay. We'll move right into into the fair share program. With um.
That's on the summer fifth. Community survey.
Community survey. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Community survey results.
No problem, Mayor and Council. We have Tom Sluse, as well as I believe our consultant from Polco. On here as well.
Okay, good afternoon, councilors. Tom Sluse, Public Information Officer for the city. What I have today for you are the results of the two thousand twenty-three community survey. This is, as most of you know, an inaugural effort. To basically get a sense for how Durango's residents feel about living in the city, as well as to kind of get a perspective on some benchmarks. That we're going to set for our programs and services, as well as some benchmarks on. The area other communities that are conducting similar surveys. So I'm just going to give you a quick overview of the process, and then we have Jason Newmeyer from Polco, who will kind of walk you through all the nitty gritty. And the results of the survey itself. So. At this point, you know, the city has done these types of surveys in the past. These are real high level surveys, but typically we have not established benchmarks. That allow us to track the survey topics for the most part, and we have not been tracking these types of data historically to see how they've morphed. You know, again, other departments have done these surveys, but for a community survey in particular, we have not really gone down this path. So this is uncharted territory for the city, but it's a very beneficial thing. So. At this point, we have both components. We have established a baseline on the residents' perspectives. From a general livability perspective of how they feel about the city, and we also have some metrics that can give us an idea of how we compare to other communities. Of course, the goal bottom line is we want to track our progress on the programs and the services that we provide. And if necessary, to identify any areas that might seem need some additional attention. So moving forward, we're going to conduct this survey every two years. And area. So this is the first year, next one will be in two thousand twenty-five, and then we're going to get this information out to the public. Through, of course, a news release, we're going to have a dedicated webpage on the website where everybody can get this information, and we will add to it two years from now. And then we will do our usual social media messaging along with our connected engage platform. So that really is just the sixty thousand foot view of kind of the method as to how we got to this point. There's a lot of information that you're going to be exposed to from Jason with Polco, which is the company that conducted the survey. So I don't want to get tie up too much of his time. We have half an hour, and I think he's targeted to take about twenty-eight, twenty-nine minutes with you. So at this point, unless anybody has any questions on how we got here, I will turn it over to Jason.
Great, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, council members. I'm just going to share my screen here quickly. So you can see our presentation. Are you able to see the slide deck here, Tom?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, council members, thank you. As Tom said, my name is Jason Newmeyer, survey specialist here with Polco. And I am happy to present a summary of the findings here from Durango's National Community Survey or the NCS. And before I begin, on behalf of myself and my Polco coworkers, I really would like to thank Tom, who was our primary contact. Throughout survey development and the implementation process. He provided thoughtful and detailed feedback and really helped to communicate how important this survey was to the entire Durango community. And that hard work and due diligence really. Shows here in the number of residents who engage in this process. So first and foremost, thank you there. A little bit about who we are. First about Polco. Polco's online community engagement polling platform really provides local governments and other public sector leaders with the information tools that they need. Today, over six hundred organizations nationwide use Polco for strategic planning, for budgeting, and for empowering resident voices. Ultimately, we make civil verified community engagement online not only possible but accessible to all. NRC, the National Research Center, and Polco merged in two thousand nineteen to more effectively serve local governments and to project resident voices. The National Research Center at Polco gives local governments and other public sector organizations the data that they need to make informed decisions. NRC is best known for our national benchmarking surveys such as the National Community Survey that was completed here with Durango. Including the NCS, the National Employee Survey, and the Community Assessment for Older Adults, among others. In addition, we are also exclusive partners with ICMA and the National League of Cities. We work with the Alliance for Innovation. And we also work closely with the American Association for Public Opinion Research, UW Madison here in Wisconsin, and the Hoover Institute at Stanford University. So a little bit about the NCS here. The National Community Survey is a standardized five-page comprehensive survey. And it allows municipalities to assess resident opinions about their community and about local governance. The NCS focuses on these ten facets of livability that are characterized here in a number of questions throughout the survey. These facets have been identified through decades of extensive survey research as those that are most impactful to the overall quality of life of your residents. These facets also tend to align with a lot of the municipal departments within the city, making it easy for staff to quickly find the information. That is of most importance to them in the final report of results. Now, before we dive into those results, I do want to emphasize that there are a variety of ways that these results can be used. Most commonly, we see jurisdictions that we work with use the survey data to monitor trends over time of resident opinion. To measure government performance and ratings of public trust and to inform their budgeting processes and their strategic planning. Our results also allow you to benchmark your community's specific characteristics against those same characteristics within other communities using our benchmark database. And our hope is ultimately that as we present these results to you today, it will spur ideas for what could be done with these results or where you may want to dig deeper. So our benchmarking database here is really the biggest advantage to doing surveys here with us at Polco. NRC was the first organization to conceive of the idea to create benchmarks for public opinion for local governments. This allows jurisdictions like Durango to compare ratings of your services to ratings of similar services within other communities. Today, there are currently six hundred comparison communities in our database, and they represent the opinions of more than fifty million residents. So next, a little bit about how we set up this survey here and the most recent implementation of the NCS for Durango. All households within Durango were eligible to participate in this survey. A list of households within the zip code serving Durango was purchased based on updated lists from the United States Postal Service. And then using the GIS boundary files provided by the city, addresses located outside of Durango's boundaries were removed from that list. And from that, a random sample of three thousand addresses were selected to receive the NCS survey. The three thousand selected households received mailings beginning on June twenty-seventh, and the survey remained open for six weeks. The first mailing was a postcard, which invited the households to participate in the survey online. And the next mailing contained a cover letter with instructions, a five-page survey questionnaire, and the postage paid return envelope. Both the postcard and the cover letter also included the web link and QR codes to give residents the opportunity to respond online so that should they so choose. And then finally, a final reminder postcard was sent and asked those who had not completed the survey to do so. A total of seven hundred and twenty-three completed surveys were received from these efforts, providing a response rate of twenty-six percent and a margin of error of plus or minus four percentage points. We then compared the demographic profile of survey respondents. To that of all adults living in Durango, using the most recent census and American Community Survey data, and we waited the final survey results. Waiting is a survey research best practice, and it really helps to improve the representativeness of the results in the final report. So with that, we'll turn our attention to an overview of the results next, and we'll start by talking about some of those facets of livability that we identified earlier. In the survey itself, we asked two questions that directly address those ten facets of community livability, and the first is found here on the screen. The first asked residents to rate the quality of each of these facets, and you can see the resulting comparison to our national benchmark in the shading on the chart. The overall quality you can see here of Durango's Parks and Recreation System and its natural environment scored above national averages. While the other eight scored similar to our national benchmarking trends. The second question that we ask in regards to these ten facets asks is centered on how important residents think it is for the community to focus on these facets in the coming two years. So we ask both about the quality and about the importance of these ten facets. And we use these answers to create a quality importance matrix, which you can see here on the next slide. We use this quality importance matrix, which is also found in the PDF of the report. To help determine which areas are of relatively higher importance and lower quality to residents, those that are located in the lower right-hand quadrant as pictured. And this chart is ultimately just one of many ways to interpret the data and can be used to help identify key findings. And to help a community determine which areas may need additional focus or additional or additional resource allocation. And which others are performing well by comparison. So in taking a step back and looking at the entire. Questionnaire here, there are one hundred and seventeen survey items for which residents provided evaluative ratings in this NCS. Sixteen of those received ratings that were higher than the national benchmark here in Durango. Eighty-four received similar ratings and seventeen received lower ratings. Ratings are considered similar if they are within ten points of the national average and higher or lower if they are more than ten points different from that average. If you're interested in the full list and seeing which are higher and which are lower, you can see that for all one hundred and seventeen questions. Starting in the PDF report on page twenty-seven. That's the national benchmarking table. So moving now into the highlights of our findings, I do want to point out a few things that stood out to us as survey researchers. There is a lot of additional data in the full report. That we won't cover today, but today's presentation will really focus on a few areas that we found to be most noteworthy within Durango's survey results. So our first key finding here, residents appreciate Durango's natural environment and the overall recreational opportunities. When asked about aspects of the community that the city should focus on in the next two years. Over eight in ten residents prioritize the overall quality of the natural environment as an essential or very important area of focus. Over nine in ten Durango residents also reported excellent or good ratings when asked to assess the overall quality of the natural environment in Durango today. A number that came in higher than our national benchmarks. Other questions that were related to Durango's natural environment also scored higher than the benchmark, including Durango's water resources, Durango's open space, and the preservation of natural areas. The Parks and Recreation System was also prioritized with over eight in ten residents prioritizing the overall quality. Of Durango's Parks and Recreational System as essential or very important areas of focus. And ninety percent of residents rated the current Parks and Rec system as excellent or good. These are very high numbers. Once again, many of the other questions related to Parks and Recreation scored above the national average, and you can see them shaded there on the chart. Recreational opportunities, fitness opportunities, the availability of walking paths, and the city's recreation centers and facilities. The second key finding here identified by our survey researchers, Durango's residents feel safe and experience a high quality of life. About eight in ten Durango residents, there we go. Rated Durango as a place to live and the overall quality of life within the city as excellent or good. A similar proportion also gave positive ratings to the overall image and the overall reputation of Durango. While over eight in ten stated that it was very or somewhat likely that they would remain in Durango for the next five years. Many of these quality of life ratings are correlated probably with the positive ratings provided by safety topics within Durango. Nearly eight in ten residents provided excellent or good marks to their overall feelings of safety within the city. Additionally, over nine in ten respondents reported feeling very or somewhat safe in their neighborhoods during the day. And in Durango's downtown and commercial areas during the day, both in line with benchmark comparisons. Eighty-four percent of respondents reported feeling similar, reported similar feelings of safety from violent crime, and seventy-seven percent felt safe from property crime. The lone measure of safety to come in under the benchmark was feelings of safety from flood, fire, or other natural disaster. However, many of the safety services received strong marks from residents. Fire services received the highest score with more than nine in ten evaluating this service as excellent or good. Ambulance and EMS services, as well as fire prevention and education, were positively evaluated by more than eighty percent of respondents. While police services, animal control, and emergency preparedness received excellent or good ratings from around seven to ten residents. Now, even amidst these strong scores, this facet of livability, that being safety, received one of the highest ratings of importance from residents. Eighty percent of Durango residents stated that safety was an essential or very important focus area for the city. Key finding number three, many aspects of the local economy did receive positive reviews, but residents show some concern about general affordability and their own economic outlook. A majority of residents, fifty-four percent, positively rated the quality of the city's overall economic health in line with benchmark comparisons. Over nine in ten respondents provided excellent or good marks to Durango as a place to visit. And another three quarters positively evaluated the vibrancy of the downtown and commercial areas, both higher than national averages. The overall quality of business and, oh, sorry, go ahead. Oh, maybe there was no question?
No question, I don't think.
Sorry, I'll keep going. I thought somebody.
No, thank you.
Yes, the overall quality then of business and service establishments received similar scores with seventy-four percent reporting excellent or good. While fifty-four percent gave favorable marks to the variety of business and service establishments in Durango, both on par with national benchmarking. Now, while most of these evaluations. Receive related to Durango's economy were similar to national benchmarks. Results did indicate that residents were less optimistic about their own personal economic outlook and the affordability of some resources within the city. When asked what impact the economy would have on their family income in the next six months, only sixteen percent anticipated that it would be very or somewhat positive. The cost of living in Durango also received positive marks from only around five percent of respondents. And other measures of affordability also showed signs of resident concern. Fewer than four in ten residents positively evaluated the availability of affordable quality food. And only twelve percent reported excellent or good scores to the availability of affordable quality childcare and or preschool. In addition, as you can see on the slide here, just three percent of respondents felt favorably about the availability of affordable quality housing in Durango. Much lower than results in other communities. So overall, residents are satisfied with the local current economy in Durango. However, the high rankings of importance and the low rankings for affordability and some of these other forward-looking indicators. Suggests that this is an area warranting the city's continued focus. And then fourth and finally. Alternative forms of transportation are a community strength in Durango and are utilized at high rates by residents. Most measures of mobility within Durango receive scores similar to or higher than national comparison communities. With two-thirds providing positive reviews of the overall quality of the transportation system within the city. Alternative forms of transportation received even higher marks. The ease of walking and the ease of travel by bicycle. Both received positive valuations that surpassed our national benchmarks with scores of eighty-one percent and seventy-eight percent respectively. Another six in ten residents reported positive evaluations of bus and transit services in Durango, again exceeding national comparisons. Further evidence of the strength of these alternative modes of transportation is really found here in the usage rates that respondents reported. Over eight in ten Durango residents stated that they had walked or biked instead of driving over the past twelve months. While another two-thirds reported carpooling with others over that same time period. Finally, around one-third of respondents reported that they had used public transportation instead of driving over the last year. Each of these results were higher than national averages, with walking or biking and carpooling scoring more than ten percentage points higher than other communities around the country. So our four summary points are our big key findings are listed here on the screen. Number one, residents appreciate Durango's natural environment and the recreational opportunities available to them. Number two, Durango residents feel safe, and that safety experience leads to an experience, leads to them experiencing a high quality of life. Number three, many aspects of the local economy did receive positive reviews, but residents do show some concerns about affordability and their own economic outlook. And then fourth and finally, alternative forms of transportation are a community strength in Durango and are utilized at rates, at high rates by residents. Now, as you continue to discuss these results internally, we have put together some question prompts here. That we think can help to facilitate the conversation, not only about what this report shows, but also about the areas that you may want to dig deeper. And speaking of digging deeper and continued engagement, the online version of this survey was hosted on Polco, as we said earlier. And after completing that online survey, residents were asked if they would like to join your online Polco panel. You can share new questions through social media, email, local media, and other channels as appropriate. And ultimately continue to engage with this online community panel by asking follow-up questions to this community survey. Using our curated library of questions, polls, and surveys, or you can ask about hot topics or new policy issues as they arise. Currently, Durango has three hundred and sixty-nine panel participants that are waiting to be engaged with on Polco. You can continue to ask questions to them and engage in dialogue with them, while also encouraging others to join this digital panel too. So with that, I am happy to open it up to any questions that you might have about this process, about the report. Or about continued engagement with Polco, and I can turn it back to Tom if needed as well.
Mayor and Council, just a couple of things to kind of reiterate on this. On the survey of the, you know, when you look at the results, it's a snapshot in time. On the survey of the, you know, when you look at the results, it's a snapshot in time. Uh, the most important part is the follow-up. So when you look at surveys and making sure that you do them and kind of looking at doing this every two years, that's when you're able to really be able to understand, did it go up, did it go down? The first one's a little tougher because you don't know if it was taken in two years ago, uh, what the results would have been then, uh, so this is really a good chance to lay a foundation and a framework, uh, to see some of the, or to hear and listen to some of the concerns and some of the things that we're doing really well, uh, really helps us, I think, going into our strategic plan retreat coming up here in March, uh, to kind of look at some of the goals and outlines and some of the objectives the council may have, but a really good step in, in the, uh, the, in the right direction and laying a framework and then uh, outlining some objectives, and then in two years when we do it again, uh, we'll be able to see what may have grown, what have we improved, or what areas maybe we need to still focus on. So just wanted to add that as a summary at the end of the survey, and if you have any questions, I'm sure, uh, the gentleman will be here to answer.
Thank you so much. How do we want to start? Questions from council?
Will there be an opportunity, maybe Tom, this might be a better question for you, like maybe for another opportunity two years from now to, you know, if you rated this, you know, in the lower or negative or, um, very negative category, like what, what is the caveat to, to them like, hey, this is why I scored it so low, you know, whether it's a personal experience or their overall, like, um, what they perceive as, as that being, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, um, economic health at fifty-four percent, you know, I'm sure to me that's, that's an alarming statistic. I mean, forty-six percent of people think that we, we don't have um, a decent economic outlook for Durango and La Plata County, so why is there a way to ask them like, hey, what is, why do you feel this way? Um, is that, is that possible to even offer some of that maybe summary, or maybe this, this follow-up, what we're talking about, a better way to kind of?
Well, not to pawn this off on, on Jason, but the, I guess that'd be the question, uh, for you, Jason, which is within the additional data that is provided in greater detail on the survey results, is that kind of information, uh, available to kind of mine to, to further hone and answer for this type of question?
Yeah, it certainly is. So in the actual, um, PDF of the results itself, did, did, did the screen switch to the PDF here for you, or are you still seeing?
Yes, it did.
Okay, great. So you can see in the PDF here itself, if you scroll actually to the bottom, you can get the complete frequencies of each question that was asked. So we'll give you the number and the percentage for excellent, good, fair, poor. So all of the results are, are reported as percent positive, meaning that fifty-four percent number that was quoted is the number of residents who said excellent or good. Uh, and you can see the full breakdown of excellent, good, fair, poor, uh, in that complete set of frequencies, and I would reiterate that probably the best way to dig deeper into that is to continue to engage. We have an excellent economic development, uh, survey that's already curated on Polco, and you have the continued engagement use of the platform. Uh, so you could go back to those three hundred and sixty-nine, um, panel participants and ask them to respond to the survey that focuses more specifically on economic development, and we can make custom questions in there, edits, make it align more closely to what you're looking for. But if you're looking for the data for this results or this survey, it starts on page thirty-two, but continued engagement is really the best route forward.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I, uh, thank you for that, uh, presentation and the survey. I think this is a really good survey, uh, because it captures, even though it's a point in time, the whole community instead of a select, uh, group. I, I'm, I mean, a lot of these findings in the survey are similar to what I would have expected, and it's not very positive, I think, because as the one that, uh, councillor Woodruff explained, um, we have low scores in economy on place of work, employment opportunities, cost of living, uh, mobility concern, very low parking, um, and this is known, and the parking management might not be the best way to address it, if that is the community-wide survey result. And even on spots where we score high, uh, like the recreational and the walking and the cycling, we should ensure as a council that we uh, improve it even better. So not just the bad ones, but even the, the cycling. Another low one was the repairs on, uh, roads and sidewalks, and I'm thinking, I drive on Third Avenue, and there's a big pothole already, and the winter isn't even started. But the, and another one here is, um, affordable quality food. There's the Good Food Collective and the La Plata Food Equity Coalition. Um, they are, maybe we should, and same for childcare. Maybe we should work harder to, uh, work with these great organizations in our community to address them and provide the tools and the financial resources, maybe the Mason Child Center. So I'm, I look forward to seeing how these survey results get translated into parts of the strategic plan and how we can do better in addressing the low scores as well as the ones where we, uh, have it for free, basically, the recreational and the nature environment. One of the things that really stuck out to me, and maybe that's a question to you, is I was very disappointed, but realistically expecting it, the low, uh, scores on the governance. Uh, and hopefully our council takes note of that. The low score for the direction Durango is taking, treating all residents fairly, um, confidence in government, open and transparency, welcoming resident involvement, acting in the best interest of the community, informing residents about issues in the community, and honesty. That, that's, we, we need to do a lot better there, a lot better. And i- in the survey, I think it puts a benchmark with other communities, but if we score forty percent, I think that's not acceptable.
Um, there, just two quick notes there. I don't know if there was a direct question, but I'll, I'll take the floor while I have it here. Um, one great place to see the overview, as I showed in the, um, in the slide deck, is this, uh, quality importance matrix that you see on page nine. Uh, this really allows you to compare what your residents think is the most important, running on that horizontal axis, and then what is of the highest quality running on the vertical axis. So things down there in the bottom right corner are areas that residents think are very important, and that they may have rated lower than other facets, uh, in, in that area. Uh, and then in regards to the governance scores, which you can see, it looks like starting on page eleven here, um, we have seen general trends, uh, since the end of about twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, uh, of governance scores, uh, declining briefly after COVID. Uh, local governments', um, ratings have come down on the whole, which, um, you can see here, though, you're still being rated to the last five years of those six hundred communities. Uh, so this is a good cross-section of the last five years, and you can see the benchmark scores here on the right. Uh, so sometimes it's helpful to take in the benchmark scores, sometimes it's helpful to take in the overall percentage. Uh, those are the pros and cons that obviously you as a council have to weigh, but just to point out those two, those two areas for you.
Yeah, uh, thank you. I, I think the results speak for themselves. I, I hope everybody sees this survey.
Alrighty, thank you, Jason, for the survey. There wasn't, um, anything odd or ordinary after I read this whole thing. It seems like it presents what has been in Durango, where we pu- we spent a lot of time on the recreational aspects of our quality of life, and that shows in this survey. And I see that we do have to work at our diversity issues and our ethnic makeup from the respondents of the survey, because, you know, when I look at ninety-one percent white responding to the survey, you know, that's like, wow, maybe, you know, the outreach to people who are non-white didn't happen. So that's a little bit disappointing. And also, um, the scores on diversity, as, um, councillor Bozeman mentioned, those were also, um, very low. Um, and I don't know if, if, when you did the survey, if you had any way to indicate the fact that, you know, that the city doesn't promote diversity that well, and that's evident by the vote last week of not reinstating the Diversity Commission, and also the fact that we closed down public participation from city boards, before the previous council resigned their, um, commission. So maybe if we go forward with this, um, survey, the next, in a couple of years, we also make sure we try to include that kind of questioning, because you know, to me, being a person of color and seeing these kind of statistics, it doesn't look like we've moved forward at all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. So I, I think you're referencing here the, uh, waiting table, uh, which you can see on page four. So I do think this is an important point of, of, of clarification. So you can see the first ta- ta- I should say, column here, uh, is our unweighted results. So you're right, uh, in the number of people that responded. Uh, you can see, uh, here ninety-one percent, um, of the people who responded were, um, white only, uh, or white alone, uh, is the, is the way the census frames that. Uh, so the first column is our raw results. Uh, the target number comes from your community characteristics. So we get those numbers from the US Census and from the American Community Survey, uh, those results that come in, and then we weight the data. Uh, so the results that you're seeing are using demographic breakdowns of this middle column. Uh, so we will turn up the voices of some groups we know don't respond at, at higher levels, young renters. We also oversample into those people who live in multifamily homes, because we need to get more multifamily home respondents, uh, in this group. Uh, so when you're looking at the results, there are two ways to view it. You can view the raw results, which are, are here, and that's found at the end of the report, or all of the, uh, percentages that you see throughout the entire report for each facet are based on the weighted numbers. And we certainly do have a, a diversity equity and inclusion survey, if you did want to include a follow-up uh, in our engagement, uh, afterwards to those panel participants. Uh, we can certainly talk about, uh, how to get that out. Uh, again, we have almost four hundred Durango residents who are ready to respond, uh, to Polco, uh, surveys and polls. Uh, so we can put that together too, if that's something you're interested in.
Okay, that sounds, um, great. Hey, I'm wondering, when you say the raw results and the unweighted results, does that put back into the survey results uh, the category that you eliminated by, I don't know? Is that also included in those results, or is that eliminated also?
In the full raw results, you will get the don't know numbers as well. Uh, throughout the report, we exclude the don't know numbers. So the numbers you're seeing are just the people who had an opinion on the certain question, and it's based on the weighted numbers, so based on the demographics of the broader community.
And then how did you determine what weighted average you used?
Yeah, so we actually pull those numbers directly from the census from twenty twenty, and then from the twenty twenty-two American Community Survey. So broad surveys that are happening every year within the community.
Okay, so those are national standards.
Correct, but they're for Durango itself. We only use the respondents from Durango, yeah. Yeah, good question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Real quick, um, hey, Jason, can you walk councillors through and, and also me? Typically, when you're looking at some of these DEI components regarding community surveys within a larger metropolitan area, isn't that typically where you would be looking at specific precincts to make sure that you had, uh, a better representation, and that necessarily wasn't available in Durango, I believe, right?
Yeah, we certainly can do that, uh, if there is, um, a way in which we want to kind of subdivide the community. Some people will do, you know, north of X street or in this local neighborhood, uh, and we can, uh, divide up by area and, and report out by area. Uh, it, it's, it does not really allow us to oversample into certain regions. If you think there's an area that might be of lower response, we try to take that into account in other ways, uh, through our sampling process with the USPS. Uh, but if that is something that we want to do moving forward, we can certainly work with our GIS team uh, and try to, you know, carve up Durango in such a way that we can see the results by area and, and try to compare the, the demographic breakdowns that way too. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Jason, I think I, or Aunt or Tom, I think I, I saw it potentially in the agenda doc, but can you remind us, uh, how much the survey costs? First question, and how long it takes from start to finish to get the survey data?
Yeah, the total cost, well, go ahead, Jason.
I was gonna say, I can answer the second question. I'm not sure what the contracted cost was, but the second question is, uh, it usually takes about eighteen weeks from start to finish, uh, to get the entire mailing materials, sample, data collection, and analysis done. But in that contract, you also have continual engagement in an online-only style, uh, through that panel again of the four hundred residents, and I'll turn it back over for the, for the numbers.
Yeah, for the numbers, it was twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty. Actually, for a two-year term, which gives us one year, um, of doing the community survey, and then the second year is using their platform for additional surveys if we need to.
Great. Um, so just a couple of thoughts I have. Definitely, I think, I think it's, uh, a good, a good step for us to be taking and using as a benchmark. I see it as great, good for accountability. Um, seeing how well we're meeting the needs of our, and expectations of our residents. Um, I think we can use it, as he was saying, for data-driven decision-making, informing policy and resource allocation, prioritizing projects. Um, I think it's a good way to foster community engagement. Um, and as I could see in some of the data, it's good for performance evaluation of various areas within our departments, identifying areas of excellence as well as those that need improvement, and for long-term planning, um, and our strategic planning. The key findings to me were, like councillor Yazi said, I think, um, something that we all would have kind of expected. Um, but it also does show me that, um, you know, the concern about affordability, that some of the things we've taken, that some of the steps we've taken as a, as a city to address that with, you know, we just had the residents' Durango opening, which was supported by the majority of council, and so, um, I was really happy to see, uh, some steps taken there, um, as well as our Housing Innovation Division, supported again by the majority of council, trying to focus, um, on these areas to see if, you know, we can, project by project, start meeting some of these needs. Um, it was interesting for me to see the information around transit. Um, I know that we've done quite a bit of effort around, you know, providing free transit through the summer, which was well-received, but even still, six out of ten, um, positive, you know. I know we try hard to increase our headways, um, and the frequency, um, and I know it's a budget issue, but, um, that, that stuck out to me as well. Um, and some questions I had, um, about, uh, about the survey itself was, one was around environmental sustainability. Um, I was really trying to see if people thought that enough steps are being done to address and promote sustainability within our region. Um, and then also with some of the changes we've made around community engagement, I think it might be helpful over time to, uh, you know, uh, ask some specific questions if we could, um, going forward, such that we could benchmark and see how we're improving. Questions such as, um, you know, have you been engaged with local government initiatives? Um, and then, you know, do you feel your input is valued and considered in local decision-making? Just some really specific questions, I think, would help us target that as we continue to, uh, move forward with our community engagement.
Sure, i- if I may, uh, mayor and council, I kind of alluded to it before, but I think it might need to be highlighted a bit on here of, you know, it's a data point, it's a statistically valid data point. It shows kind of where we are on some of these objects and things, but I'd be careful to make any judgments on this quick first survey, because we don't know where we were two years ago. Right? So two years ago, these scores could have been a lot better, they could have been a lot worse. And so it's hard to take a snapshot in time and then say like, oh, there's something here. We don't know, it could have been an approval, impro- improving from where we were two years ago, or it could be a decrease. So that's the important part of that, second part of that survey, of knowing how are we doing, what is that trend going? Because right now, it really is a, a snapshot in time, and I think what you're looking at uh, in regards to some of those general parts of really looking, and if we're in the similar part of benchmarks of other cities, we're struggling just like some other cities in some areas of it. Affordability being one of them. I mean, if you look at what has happened since, uh, just twenty twenty in the economy with COVID inflation, cost of living, uh, being able to buy a house, uh, childcare, all of these things we're struggling with, and people are feeling uh, a lot of different pressures, and I'm not sure we'll ever find out what's the exact one.
Right.
But I think when you look at the world today and news media and articles, uh, you look at, uh, the economy, and I don't think anyone really feels absolutely excited of where this is going. Uh, but as the economy usually gets better, results get better. Uh, the other part of that is with your governance side of it. When you look at, uh, governance across the, the country and how it looks, and every time you look at national news and local news, there's always a, uh, a clash or something going through, and so that also hurts a little bit. Now, does that mean we should take these and say like, no? I was like, no, I look at them, and I saw most of them are within the benchmark. It shows there's It shows there's areas that we need to improve, but we don't know, this is the way to show what we're gonna do as we move forward, if it's actually moving the needle in the right way or not.
Right.
And so it, I think it's a good part for us to take a look at a, a brave step in regards to, we're gonna go out there, we're gonna see how we reset ourselves on this foundation and then move forward with it. It's a very similar conversation that I had with our directors uh, about two years ago when we had our first employee survey of being careful on how you receive that information because maybe trust is low in your department, but maybe two years ago, it was much lower than it was now. Or maybe it was much better. So we really are just seeing that's something to focus on as we go into our next one in two years. That then is really gonna tell the story of how did we, we knew where we started and how have we done on those two years portions of it. So I would just kind of keep this as it's a very good data point to have. Uh, but uh, understanding it's a data point, it's a snapshot in time. People fill it out at different parts of what's going on. And one day, they may have been really mad about a zoning issue. One day, they may have been really happy about something like a parks and recreation groundbreaking. And a lot of these things in current times will influence how people do surveys. So just a part for us to always make sure that we're continuously checking in a tool in our community engagement plan.
I completely agree, and I think your point is very well taken, that this is the first uh, first time we've really done it at this level. Um, citywide, like Tom said, we've done it within departments, but this is a good, a good first. I, I don't, just I disagree that this is, um, that these data points are, um, they're informative and they're, they're, uh, they're a good basis just to begin. Um, and I think it's a good process uh, going forward, um, for all the reasons you discussed. And um, and to, I, I know we're focusing on many of these issues. I know, you know, around governance that, that's been a big part of our, of our, what, locally within the city staff, with the customer service and, and attempts at um, teamwork and all, all of our values that we're really, really focusing on. So um, hopefully we'll see some, some of that over, over two, four and six years. Yes.
Yes. Um, hey, Jason, I have one more question. Um, why was the number 3,000 chosen for sending out the mailings to the um, survey participants?
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, so over time, that number has actually slowly increased as unfortunately, we know, response rates uh, have decreased. So 3,000 is a number we use so that if we hit our response rate, a goal of at least 15%, and I will just say Durango's response rate of 26% was one of the highest I've seen uh, in a while. Uh, that allows us to get to our margin of error of at least plus or minus 5%. So it's a, it's a methodological distinction. We really want to make sure we can get you numbers that you can trust and that don't have margins of error that are huge, right? Because then what does it really tell you? So uh, we choose 3,000 just to make sure we can get you results that are A, statistically valid and have that the smallest margin of error as possible.
Great. Other counselor questions or comments?
Uh, I guess I'll just finish up. Um, I think this gives us, it gives me hope um, that we have some really good opportunities to, to, to build on successes. Um, and for us as a body, uh, a council body to enact sound policy, to really shape the operational decision-making for how we operate as a municipality. So I, for one, um, you know, while some things are like, oh, crud, you know, like, what are we gonna do? I think it gives us ample opportunity to really be better, you know? Data is neither good nor bad. It's just, it is what it is. And now it gives us a better roadmap and guidepost to, to make good, sound decisions and policies to, to really reflect what our values are. So thank you for the time, Jason. I, I look forward to where we see this grow over the next two years.
Great, thank you so much. Um, and I'm happy to follow up. Uh, the last slide there, which I don't know if we got to, has my email. Uh, so if anybody has direct questions, feel free to reach out. Uh, and I'm sure uh, Tom, you and I will reconnect here shortly to debrief and talk about engagement moving forward.
Great. Excellent. Thanks so much, Jason. We really appreciate your help, Tom. Did you wanna say something?
Well, I was just thinking about your comments on um, community engagement, you know, and short of including a, a question dedicated on the survey when Clancy gets back, you know, we can re-circle back with her and think about, we have the platform for a year.
Right.
And the interim, using it in that, in that manner. So we're, we're not, we're kind of on the micro level to get those answers as opposed to the macro, which I think is one way to address it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Excellent. Thanks again, Jason. We really appreciate your help.
Great. Thank you so much. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Yeah, you too. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Excellent. So with that, um, appreciate all your help, Tom. Thank you. Great start. We appreciate it. So with that, we'll move on to the discussion and reconciliation of the City Managers 2024 Proposed Budget.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, we have Devin Schmidt, our Chief Financial Officer, to go over the reconciliation, which entitles uh, the things that we have, staff has changed from the proposed budget as we're getting ready to go into the appropriation ordinances that will be heard on November 21st.
And just a reminder for all of us as council, um, in our study sessions, I'm sure Mark will remind us if we don't, that, you know, we're here to be informed uh, from staff and ask questions. Um, but we don't provide direction in these meetings uh, or make decisions. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm Devin Schmidt, uh, Chief Financial Officer for the City of Durango, here to present the 2024 City Managers reconciled budget. So for our presentation outline, um, we do have the budget overview, and then we will go through the um, different uh, fund changes. Um, and um, if council is agreeable, if we could get through each of the sections and then um, just hold those questions through, does that work okay for council?
Yeah, that works great.
Okay, perfect. So starting off with our budget overview, um, just gonna kind of start off with our little timeline here. So we are at the um, reconciliation um, study session. Um, this evening, we will um, have the public hearing um, for the City Managers' proposed budget to include the highway user tax funds. Um, on the 21st of November, we'll have the public hearing on the appropriation ordinances for operating and capital. Um, first reading of the ordinances for um, capital and operating. And then on December 5th, will be the second reading and final approval of the appropriations for operating and capital. And then we will also have three resolutions um, for operating capital and the mill levy certification. And then from there, the budget um, is adopted by council, should council choose to do that. So moving on to our um, next slide, and I had um, sent this core respondents out to council. Um, I apologize for the clarity needed on these, um, on this slide five. I did leave it as part of the packet, um, where um, I did go ahead and add a slide six and seven where we can take a deeper dive into this information. Um, but I did want um, council to understand that the combined summary um, can be a bit problematic. Um, is it something that we can't generate from OpenGov with all of the different summations and those types of items in there? Um, so we manually create this format. Um, while the information and the content does come from OpenGov, all of the summations um, is staff-driven. So um, diving into that, um, just wanted to provide that update. Um, looking at um, the next slide. So this is really the, the changes reflected from the previous slide where the um, lavender highlights, and I apologize, it's so small, that's why I printed it out for you. Hopefully, hopefully you have your readers if you need those. Um, yes, um, so the lavender um, does reflect those changes. Um, as council can see, um, the, it's, um, the revenues are um, no changes for the estimated beginning, no changes for the total revenues. And then there's a $12,356,000 change, and that is um, related to the transfer for the um, trash and recycle operating into capital. Okay, moving on, I just wanted to take a little bit deeper dive into um, this fund summary. Um, as we discussed at the budget retreat, um, budget and accounting has been working really closely to reflect the changes of inter-fund transfers, which are um, exchanges between funds that are reported as revenues in the seller funds and expenditures or expenses in the purchaser funds. And so um, we wanted to be able to also break out charges and services where a service is really being provided by an internal service function um, to an operations department. So it's still reflective of a revenue and expense relationship at a fund level, but we wanted to be able to provide that so that we're able to show um, when we do complete our 2023 act for um, how those changes and how all of that meshes together a little bit better for the, for the public and council. Um, what, from a budget perspective though, council really does approve the budget at a fund level, setting the expenditures at a not-to-exceed amount um, for the year, but we wanted to really just be able to bridge that. So I'll take you through um, some of these now. Um, and I know that those are small, but and on, on your printout there, um, it kind of shows um, what that information is. So um, but just going through some of those, just give me one second on here because my slideshow is showing the same way as your printout. Um, so our first one for our, the general fund, we're showing um, charges for services out. And so I just wanted to give some examples of what those are. So those are um, items with vehicle rent and maintenance, tech replacement and warehouse. Um, the $62,000 right next to that, as we click through here, um, that is capital. Um, that, that is moving to Fund 42 um, for CIP, so that 62,000 is moving there. Um, the next one we have up top here, the $1.3 million under the general fund for charges for services provided is for the cost allocation plan. And so that's for the internal services that are provided by human resources, finance, um, city attorney's office to the enterprise funds. Um, right next to that for our transfers in is um, the post. Um, so the 2005 post, open space, parks and trails, the 2015, the 2019 and the lodgers tax admin. So that's your transfer into the general fund on those revenues. Jumping over to um, our lodgers tax fund, um, the transfer out is lodgers tax administration and then transit, um, that 20% that is contributed to transit. Um, moving over to our 911 communication fund, those are our user agency contributions. So those are from La Plata County, Durango Fire Protection District, um, the, our own police force. And so that's reflective of those. And then moving kind of down the line here, um, you'll see for general services, we do have a transfer that's coming in for our charges for services provided, um, which is from the general fund, water, sewer, trash and recycle. And that's based on the usage of our warehouse facility. So um, that's what that is showing there. And this is all reflective in all of the fund summaries. I just wanted to take the opportunity, since we had talked about it at the budget retreat, to better provide council with some descriptions about what is in each of these categories. And then jumping down to our vehicle, equipment and service. Um, when we're looking at this one, so these are from general fund, water, sewer, trash, recycle, transportation. Um, and these are based on the maintenance and the repayment of equipment. So anytime a vehicle is um, purchased, um, it's originally purchased out of the department's fund. And then um, there is a cost that goes back into the VES fund to be able to purchase that for the out years as well as any maintenance that those vehicles um, require. Okay, jumping down to our um, self-insurance fund. Um, so this is obviously based on the per employee per month. Um, and so those are the insurance costs for each of the employees that exist in the different funds. Jumping down to risk manager fund, um, so this is for our workers' compensation under charges and services. So workers' compensation and property casualty services. Um, so that's our property casualty insurance, and that again is based off of um, the different work comp variables that exist in the different departments in those funds as well as um, the insurance that we carry on any of our buildings, equipment, infrastructure, things of that nature. Um, technology replacement, so this is based on um, the computer replacement schedule. So um, the computer, like the VES fund, is purchased out of the department. Um, then once it is, um, it's put into the technology replacement fund um, for replacement um, based on the usage and um, the timeline as to when those need to be replaced. Okay, jumping just over to our um, general services warehouse. So we do have um, that charges for services out from um, vehicle uh, from the VES fund over to the warehouse fund. And then popping down um, through some of our charges for services and the water fund. Um, so you'll see that that's for general services warehouse as well as cost allocation. And these are all going to be similar throughout the enterprise funds with the exception of the airport that does not utilize um, the general services warehouse fund. And then just jumping over to some of our transfers out, um, the 6.7 million is a transfer to water capital. Um, transfer of 1.4 million to sewer capital. And then that 12,356, which is from trash and recycle operating over to trash and recycle capital. And then again, as we move down some of these, um, you'll see that from the um, special revenue funds, we have the um, transfers out that are going into the general fund for the 2019 streets. Um, for the um, parks, open space and trails and um, as well as the um, recreation subsidy and Lake Night Horse. And then finally, over here, we have that 62,000 um, that you can see coming from the general fund back in over to um, the capital projects fund to cover those. And then again, the water ones, the sewer ones and the trash and recycle that I talked about coming back over and in. Um, so, I'm sorry. Whoa. I ahead of myself there. So that is really um, all of the different um, transfers. And since we had had that conversation, transfers or charges for services, since we had had that conversation at the budget retreat, um, I thought it was a good opportunity during reconciliation to help explain that um, to council. Um, and then I have one more slide in this section, and then I'll take a quick pause for any questions of councilors. Um, and just showing their combined staffing. Um, the biggest component on our combined staffing is reflective of um, 911 moving out of the general fund, um, which was part of that proposed budget. Um, the user agencies had requested that um, for um, future of planning of capital out at the 911 agencies. So um, with that, I'll hop over and at this time, I can definitely take any council questions on that section.
Just real quick, um, the lodgers tax admin and transit, the $926,000 transfer out, does that include the 11% council discretion or is that?
That does not.
That is not, okay, that'll fall under a different, will that be a transfer?
Actually, no, that does. I'm sorry.
Okay, that would, that would also include 11%?
Yes, it sure does. For the um, fair, yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Other questions from council?
Okay. So moving on to our general fund, so um, as we move through the next sections of this, I'll give council a little bit more detail about the changes since the proposed budget. And so within the general fund, um, you'll see that the joint sales tax based on La Plata County um, had changed um, based on their forecasts. Um, we may see that change again, um, just depending on how they're forecasting, but wanted to be able to provide that um, most up-to-date information. Um, lodgers tax council determination for special events, um, since we had the council meeting. Um, the last council meeting, we did um, put forward those proposals for lodgers tax. And so um, with that, we did pull out that special events transfer. And then um, also, we did have a reduction of our cost allocation plan for a phased approach with our user agencies for 911. Um, and then inter-fund transfers for the um, recreation center for cost recovery. So that was an increase from the 2015 for that cost recovery component of the recreation center. Um, general fund expenditures, I just kind of pause on this slide. This gives um, kind of the full summary level, and I'll just take you through each department um, as there's changes. Um, but that is the um, total as you're looking at the general fund expenditures. And then finally, the summary of revenues versus expenditures. So council can see that there is still an opportunity reserve of um, just over a million dollars available for 2024 projected. Um, yes.
Is that similar to the um, the leeway we had in the last, last year's budget for that $1 million leeway?
Sure. So in last year's budget, it was a bit higher. I'd have to look up what Sure. So in last year's budget, it was a bit higher. I'd have to look up what that exact number is.
Do you think that's sufficient?
Well, the opportunity reserve is really an opportunity for council to. Use that for projects. The general fund has the. Flexibility more so than the other funds do. And so if you recall, earlier this year, council did do three point two million dollars to the housing fund. And so that's really that. You can see at the bottom there what our twenty five percent is for our fund balance. And as well as any table reserves, assigned fund balances, and then our operating reserves. So. Okay, keep cruising here. So in our information technology changes, these are re appropriations for projects that need to continue into. Twenty twenty four. So a team's phone migration, domain name change and network infrastructure upgrades. So those are the changes in IT. And after I get through the general fund department, I can pause as well too, if that works for council. Okay. In affordability and economic opportunity, we have development services and economic opportunity. So development services had requested for special projects, professional services. And then we did have to do a benefits correction in development services. So those are the changes there. In economic opportunity, there were, there's a request to reappropriate one hundred and forty nine thousand five eighty seven for renew grants. And create grant. So that's a reappropriation from twenty three into twenty four. In enhance livability and sense of place, we have our parks and recreation, police, nine one one communications and municipal court. Looking at recreations, just a small change here for youth playground of twelve thousand dollars. Moving on to police. We are showing. A reappropriation for a Polaris, which was needed to be reappropriated due to delayed delivery. And so we would need to reappropriate that Motorola, Spillman, Flex Touch is a reappropriation. And then the creative culture insignia is also an appropriation and to reappropriation in twenty four. For municipal court, council had made that determination to switch to the full time municipal court judge and the reduction of the two contracts as well. And effective infrastructure network, we'll dive into those. So this is for the multimodal transfer for general maintenance for bike ped facilities. And so this is two hundred thousand dollars coming from the two thousand fifteen fund. And these expenditures would be expense out of street maintenance to help with some of those maintenance as it relates to bike ped facilities. Okay, under nondepartmental, there was an opportunity to reduce down that warehouse transfer from the general fund by one hundred and seventy five thousand five six six. And then in community support funding from the budget retreat, council had asked staff to. Look to see if there was an opportunity to increase in animal control contracts in the humane society. So we did increase those by twenty five thousand each.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the council know, I guess it was last week, Devin and I did meet with the, I guess she's the interim executive director of the La Plata Humane Society. She was a very good conversation. She understood that her ask was was pretty big. And said that she's looking for, that she was put in a position where she had to, based on a few years there of maybe where the management wasn't what it needed to be. She did ask my advice in regards to possibly changing how that allocation works and how I've seen it work in other communities. I did reiterate to her that usually what would happen in a regional type shelter, animal control play. Operation is that the communities within the county are charged for the animals that come from their specific jurisdiction. She very much liked that opportunity, liked that idea. I did pass on to her, though, that in order for that to work, everyone has to be in in the county, which means like the city of Bayfield, Ignacio, the Southern Udenian Tribe, ourselves and La Plata County. Just so that not one jurisdiction is left covering for another. And so she was very happy with that and she was going to start those conversations shortly, as there is a new executive director. That they have hired that she's very excited about. I did, while chief is behind me. He gets to know now that I volunteered PD and Chief Brammer to be the representation for the city of Durango in that conversation. As we do talk about animal control and that services and then the our cost sharing on that. So I think there will be a new model probably for next year that we will look at introducing if all of these entities are, you know, wanting to get into this portion and go with it. But just wanted to provide that update regards to council on this specific one, since we did have conversations with La Plata County Humane Society Executive Director. Thank you.
Before I move on to the internal service funds, is there any questions on the general fund? Okay, so in our internal service funds, we did have one change as it relates to risk management. And this was the addition of payment for cybersecurity specific insurance. So that was one change. Any questions on that before I hit the enterprise funds? Okay, so enterprise funds under effective infrastructure network, we will start off with transportation. And so in transportation, we worked with the department to look at moving the multimodal grants into the two thousand fifteen fund where the expenditures are coming out of. That way, we're able to really show the true cost of a project with the grant expenditures in there as well. As well as the inter fund transfer for lodgers tax for the free transit and the parking of the one hundred and nineteen. Thousand five hundred from the last council meeting where we went over those proposals. And then in expenditures, again, you'll see that same where those project expenditures did move over to the two thousand fifteen. And then including the transfer for general fund for those internal services, cost allocation. So those were added. And so you can see on here, I apologize again for the size. I wish there was a better way for us to be able to present some of these. But again, that's everything that I just talked about at that fund summary level. In the water fund, we had some FTE corrections with an addition. And then moving a point five FTE from the sewer fund to the water fund. And then an inter fund transfer correction of that amount as well. So. In the sewer fund, we have the FTE correction with those additions. And then the inter fund transfer as well in that amount. And airport, airport did meet with their advisory board. And so they set the rates for some of those parking lot, terminal rental airlines and some of those landing fees. And so this is reflective of those increases to revenues. And then in expenditures, we did have two smaller changes when we're looking at the airport fund as a whole in expenditures. And that is the fund summary for the airport. Diving into trash and recycle. So trash and recycle, we did have the twelve thousand three fifty six for capital projects. Transfer over to the trash and recycle capital fund. And then the transfer for internal services or cost allocation into the general fund. Any questions on the enterprise funds before we dive into capital projects? So capital projects on our parks, open space and trails, you'll see a reduction of. Three, three, five, four, nine, seven for park, trail and rec improvements. And so that's really the only change from proposed on that one. I'll invite Sarah Humphrey up.
The reductions in the two thousand five were to. Basically just projects that we had over budgeted for. And so we were releasing those funds.
A count with the park and rec projects that allows for some of the smaller maintenance and improvement projects. We had four projects, two of those weren't completed yet. They've been completed. All four of them have been, two of them, when we put the initial budget together. We were still working on getting numbers from contractors and getting those done. So. So they're completed now or ninety percent.
And if I can too, just as we're thinking about all of the capital projects, this is a little bit of a change that we had worked with the departments on. Historically, we did bring a larger amendment in February with all the capital projects. So the departments were great about working with us and their contractors to estimate as of October twenty fifth, how much we needed to reappropriate. For trying to meet our goal in the reconciliation process and our efforts in continuous improvement to try and get it in reconciliation. So that we're not bringing a large amendment to council in February. You know, we may still have a small amendment, of course, you know, with these construction projects as it relates to either retainage or things that maybe. Needed to get pushed into twenty twenty four due to unforeseen circumstances that can come up. But this is a change that we made in this year's budget process. So did want to highlight that as we move through some of the capital. And thank the departments for, you know, their efforts and in working with the contractors and trying to really get a good estimate as of October twenty fifth. Where they're going to be at December thirty one of twenty three. So definitely appreciate the partnership. Okay, so it's two thousand fifteen parks and multimodal. Council can see there is quite a few projects on here that are showing. Reappropriation. In some cases, you'll see like on the ADA improvement phase two, where those two projects were combined. And where the full grant amount is now being brought into this two thousand fifteen fund. So all of these listed out here, I don't, I won't read them all to you, but if you have specific questions about the reappropriations, we do have the departments here. I'm happy to help answer those. They're also listed off to the left there, if that helps. Sorry. It's a challenge. But we did list them off to the left there for council's review. Give you a second to take a look at those and then let me know and I can move on.
I'm just curious, so. How did the the counties pull out of Durango Mesa Park affect this? You know. The twenty fifteen. Proposed budget right here. Much or not at all or?
Not at all. At this point, the, any change would be for the twenty twenty five budget in that portion. So this one would remain not changed.
I have two questions. Thank you for that presentation. I had sent an email before the meeting. And one, another one during the meeting. Can you tell me what the amount of internal transfers is? I've mentioned it during the budget retreat as a question and I'll repeat the question here.
Sure. So you asking specifically on this fund or all?
All funds.
Okay. Pull that up for you. So for transfers in, we are showing the ten million seven nine five oh seven five. That's from the combined. And that was the one that councillor Rosmans, that we sent the update out on.
I.
Where we had.
Question differently then because. Man, where do I find this? When I looked at the initial proposed budget. It showed the internal transfers citywide, total revenues one hundred and seventy eight million. And then in a separate section in the proposed budget, it shows the total revenues and transfers to be two hundred and seventy million. So. If those two numbers, one includes the transfers and the other one excludes the transfers, that would be ninety two million. So that is a big difference.
So let me jump.
The same for the expenses. You have total expenses of two hundred and twenty eight million. And then later have the expenditures and transfers listed as three hundred and twenty one million. So that's. Ninety, is it ninety three, ninety three million difference. Of transfers.
Sure. So jumping back to this slide, which is page five, if it's easier to see on the printout. You can see that the transfers in is totaling that ten point seven million and the transfers out is totaling that ten point seven million.
Yeah, this, this is not, this is the, how do I say, summary document. I'm looking at the official three hundred and forty page proposed budget. That's where these numbers came from that I just gave you.
So is there a specific page on the on the proposed? Because.
Yeah, page thirty five of of four hundred and thirty five is the one that shows the total revenues of one hundred and seventy eight million. And then the other one that says two hundred and seventy million is shown on page seventy three of four hundred and thirty five.
And is that from the from the proposed when we had that conversation at the retreat? So this is the updated reconciled information that we had gone through. For council in that same form. I'm going to try to get to page thirty five here there, but I don't have it up in front of me.
And does maybe these transfers that are shown here are not all the transfers. This, you're showing transfers in, but not the internal transfers, which are also payments for insurance in and out.
Right. So we have those listed as charges for services provided. And then we have the transfers in and then charges for services out and then the transfers out as well. So.
Maybe that's where.
Well, no, I mean, I asked for the total internal transfers number. So is is the number I'm stating correct? The total amount of internal transfers that go between fronts. I mean, I assume it's correct because I have it from the proposed budget.
And. I'm going to try to get to that page thirty five, but since proposed, we're now in reconciliation. And so reconciliation is the changes since proposed. And so this is what would really come forth for council for adoption on the twenty first as well as the fifth for that final reading. Does that help? I'm waiting for the PDF to pull up just so I can get to that exact page. But I think this was. Maybe the issue that we were having at the retreat.
Well, I I'm going to just assume my number is correct then. Yours is correct for transfers in. And the ninety two is correct for the total internal transfers.
So, I mean, if you're looking at, if we're looking at this slide specifically, what we're showing for transfers in a match for transfers out. Does that help? I'm just not sure if I'm understanding. Where the question or?
Well. Every dollar amount that gets transferred from one fund to another fund, all those amounts. Are larger than just the transfers in, I think, because it shows on the proposed budget, the full. Proposed budget. I mean, I gave you the page numbers. I'm not sure how else to explain it.
And taking us some time to get the page numbers up. It's not something we were prepared for to do. And I'm not, I know we addressed some of this at the retreat, but I, without knowing the page number, this may, was this one of the sheets that. Picked up a couple of numbers and that's why the number that he's quoting was one that we had already addressed. And that's why the number that he's quoting was one that we had already addressed at the retreat, I believe.
Yeah, during the retreat, I asked that question and you were going to provide that to me. It's, it's okay. I'll, I'll leave that question unanswered. And I'll assume that the total internal transfers is 92 million, of which the transfers in is, is 10.7 million.
But this is, this is reconciliation. So this is what we are putting forward. The proposed was.
This is what we will vote on.
Correct. Yeah, you won't vote on the proposed budget.
Did you say page 35?
Page 73 of 435. At the last, the bottom, it gives you the, the two numbers I gave you. The total.
73, looks like it's the technology replacement fund?
73 of 435. So the actual paper page would be 66. I think we're going to take too much time on this. So I'll leave that question open for you to answer. Maybe if you have time for that. The next question I had was, no, I guarantee you, I was not provided with that information, but I was provided with the information that I was going to get that. And feel free to listen to that meeting. The other question I had, let's see. The, what is the currently total amount in the budget for capital projects? In the original budget, it was 92 million. Is that with these changes, is there any change in the total amount of capital projects?
Yes. So that's what is included as part of that reconciliation. So if we're just looking at this one slide, it's that 98 million, 98.9 million?
So it currently is 98.9 million. Okay.
So I get my pointer to work here.
Is that 90 million also include anything that's reallocated from years past?
Correct. So that 98.9 of all total capital project funds. If you're looking at taking out any of these dollars that are going for, say, for example, this million going to the general fund and this 200,000 and this 453. If you're looking at just capital projects, you're at that 97.3. But right here, you can see the 98.9 million. And so that does include anything that's re-appropriated.
Okay. So that's one and a half million more.
With the, the transfers out is what I'm understanding.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah. Yep. So that's one of the points that I had made as we were talking about the capital. What we're trying to do is capture anything that needs to be re-appropriate in reconciliation as of October 25th, so that we're able to say, here's what's included in the 24 budget.
Okay. And then I have a last question, a little borderline to this topic. I had asked for a current total fund balance year to date. And I sent it by email and I got a response just a second ago. Is there a way that I can find it in the very near future? No, no, this is for current year to date or the last one that you have access to. I want to have the total fund balance, the most recent one that we have for the city.
Right. And so what you're asking for is year to date. So that's taking into factor what revenues we have received and what expenditures we had expensed. And my response to you during this meeting was that we're going to close October here on Friday and we'd love to get that information to you on Monday after we're able to compile the reports. So you have the most up to date information. If you want, we have included that in our monthly reports per your request. And so, you know, we could pull one of those up and provide that for you.
That would be great. Yeah. I, I just want to see whatever the most recent number you have. Because I tried to find it on OpenGov and I cannot find it. I see old numbers. So I was hoping that OpenGov would have current information if I wanted to. So if you could send that to me before the regular meeting starts, that would be awesome.
Sure. Yeah. And just on that note too, with the estimated beginning, what that is looking at is it's taking into factor what we're estimating for the end of 24 and then what we're bringing in or end of 23 and what we're bringing into 2024.
Yeah. And this I understand. I was looking for the most recent year to date total fund balance. Whatever, whatever is the most recent you can pull up. If it's today's, if it's a month ago, whatever the most recent was.
Answer report that's on our website.
It should be.
Okay. So it is on the website.
Yeah.
We can just forward him that. Could you just forward him the September monthly financial report and just let him know what page it's on? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
2015. Okay. Before I move on on the 2015 parks and multimodal, was there any other questions from councillors in any of those projects?
I was looking at the ADA improvements, 5 million, 5.2 million. Is that multiple? I mean, is that just one in one area? I'm very happy to see that. I know we've talked about ADA improvements a lot. So I was just curious what those include or just very generally.
Yeah. So it's the same project. We received two different grants for it. So we combined the two grants into one project. Does that answer?
What area?
Oh, it's our North Main project.
North Main. It's the North Main. Okay. That's great. Okay. That's excellent.
Okay, moving on to our 2019 streets. So we do have some items there for North College reconstruction, road drainage and bid items with no utilities as well as the 50 50 construction. And so those are two reconciling items for the 19.
Can I ask a question on that? It's okay. The fund balance on that one's lower than I've seen before. And is that in compliance with any of other policies we've set? Just making sure.
So we currently do not have a fund balance policy recommendations on some of those special revenues. It's one of our goals for 24 is to get all of the funds to have a specific fund balance policy. So those ones do not currently have that. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So for the general fund, a couple of projects requesting reappropriation on the general fund. So I'll just pause there, see if council has any questions on those items. Water Capital. So again, these are reappropriations from 23 into 24. So I'll just pause and see if council has any questions on some of those projects. Okay.
More just curious, does any, are any of these capital projects include the Knight Horse? Conversations we had with the Southern U tribe. Was that in within 2024 or is that more looking out towards like 2025 and 2026 with La Posta?
Don't have Allison here, but I believe that that was looking more forward.
Forward. Okay.
For the Lake Knight Horse Pipeline.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Sewer Capital, again, some projects either requesting reappropriation or some areas where some of those projects were reduced for 2024. Okay. Airport Capital, we just have the one project for reappropriation in 24. Just listed up at the top there. And then I'll cover our special revenue funds. So in housing innovation, we do have some reappropriations as it relates to some of the grant programs as well as the ADU rebate program. And so those are several reappropriations in the housing fund. In the Durango Renewal Partnership Fund, we are showing Midtown Pete Grants as a reappropriation of 142,000. So those are projects that will carry from 23 to 24. And then in 911 Communications, there are some changes there as it relates to the county contribution for the HVAC. That one, because of delivery timelines, we had to reappropriate that project as well. And then just some areas where we were able to work with the Emergency Telephone Service Agency for revenues and then user agency contributions as we kind of move into this new 911 fund being separated out.
I'm curious, is the county on a percentage basis to contribute? Or how do you guys whip that out?
Sure. So this, the HVAC is actually a little bit unique. The dispatch center had applied for ARPA funding to be able to replace their HVAC. However, with all of the user agencies, we take a three-year average of all the call volume. And then that's how we determine each user agency contribution. So La Plata County, Durango Fire Prediction District, Fort Lewis Mesa, Fort Lewis College, Bayfield Marshals, Upper Pine. So all of those folks are contributors and it's based on three years worth of call volume is how we break out those different contributions. Okay. And then moving on to Rogers Tax, just the biggest piece here was the changes as it relates to that council determination. And so those were the proposals that we had brought to council. And so they're just reducing that down to the amount of all those proposals. And then in the Arts and Culture Grant Program and for the EV Fast Chargers, which was a council one as well, where we're looking to have some reappropriations there for those projects. And just to remind what those proposals were, it was all of them funded with the Meridian Dividers at half a proposal there. So. So just to recap, before I can answer any final questions of council, we are here. So today we'll hear later from the public, hopefully on our public hearing for the proposed budget. Then on the 21st, we'll have a public hearing on the appropriation ordinances for operating in capital. We'll have the first reading of the ordinances for operating in capital. Again, we'll have those split out into two separate ordinances for council to vote on. We'll do the second reading December 5th for final approval. And then we'll have as well three resolutions for the mill levy certification, capital operating, and then the budget would be adopted. And then I don't have on this slide, but we do submit to the Department of Local Affairs by January 31st and the Government Finance Officers Association for our distinguished budget award application. So any final questions I can answer for council?
No further questions, council? None for me either. Thank you so much for your efforts.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Little bit ahead of schedule, moving on now to multimodal transportation plan update.
Thank you. Good afternoon, city council, Madam Mayor Devon King, Transportation Staff and Sarah Hill. Setting this up, this is the multimodal transportation plan update. So we brought this back to you last in the spring of this year, but we are finally to a point where we have a draft plan for everybody to look at and see. So again, this is for the strategic of effective infrastructure, infrastructure network. The plan provides a multimodal transportation framework, outlines existing conditions, sets measurable goals and actions and creates a equitable prioritization process. So I'll go through the background and some of the background you've already seen, but just want to, everybody's up to date on that. And then we'll go through the key elements of the plan and then we'll go through next steps. So in 2021, an update to our existing 2016 multimodal transportation plan was identified in City Council's 2021 strategic plan. And then in 2022, staff started the outreach process and then completed that in 2022, which we all know that, you know, that was during COVID. So had to use all sorts of varying methods and formats for that outreach. And then in 2023, we started the plan update, contracted with a sub consultant to help with the plan update and that's where we are now. So public outreach, we had 14 meetings and events. Total number of individual comments is 458. It's just the best way to really measure kind of what the outreach had. So it included virtual meetings, in-person zone meetings. And what I mean by zones is our existing 2016 multimodal transportation plan is broken up into zones based off of snow power routes. So we went out to those specific zones. We had a meeting on Three Springs. We had a meeting out on Highway 160 West. And the idea with that was is to bring it to the people where they are and to meet with them there. And then we had certain events. So you know, the Clean Commute Week, Winter Bike to Work Day events, we had specific stuff for the multimodal transportation plan update there. We had booths at farmers markets, bid meetings. We had group meetings. And then what we mean by directed group meetings is, so for example, we had a meeting with the Latinx Subcommittee and the Senior Center as well as Southwest Center for Independence. And then we had an online comment map. So that was a GIS based map on our webpage that I think we got somewhere between 80 and 100 comments on that. But it was geospatial. So people were able to draw lines, put dots at intersections and tell us what they really wanted or needed. And then we had two online surveys as well. So what did we hear from all of that? We heard things, I think most of you are familiar hearing as well. Expand transit service and usually what people meant was headway times. And then, you know, later in the evening as well as expanded area, separated bike lanes. And so what we mean by separated bike lanes is either a separate path or separated by some sort of barrier. Save for pedestrian crossings, improved accessibility as well as ADA upgrades, slower traffic speeds. A lot of people wanted speed limits to be lower on all roads. Infrastructure maintenance and specifically around snow plowing on our sidewalks and bicycle facilities. Better bicycle and pedestrian connections and connections to the surrounding county. So now that we are updating the plan and we have a draft for you all, I'll go through the key elements and this is just to kind of help break down the plan. We did try to make the plan more digestible to the public. The existing plan is rather long and this new plan is shorter and then has everything broken down pretty, I guess, linearly. Sure. So we'll start off with the vision. Vision was updated with more inclusive language. So we kind of heard from the public that there were concerns that the vision focused, especially the measurement of the vision focused on middle school age children, which felt like others were left out of that category. So we did update the vision and that we also had inclusion of what is called the safe system approach. So that's from the Federal Highway Administration. And that is taking a look at traffic crashes, not as accidents that can't be avoided, but as, you know, serious injuries and fatalities should not be the result of our everyday lives moving around the city. So it's taking a different approach of that. Existing conditions is, you know, we tried to make sure all of our data in there was easy to access. We tried to make maps that were easy for folks to read, but also would serve staff. It's a snapshot in time. It's not, you know, it's a static look at data. It's not going to be continually evolving in the document itself. However, it will allow us that baseline to then compare and go back and look at the next time we update the plan. So as far as goals, we have five goals, which, you know, are meant and intended to support the Effective Infrastructure Network as the City Council's Strategic Plan Goals as well as sustainability. Multimodal and transportation end up melting in a lot to sustainability goals as well. Measurable actions with responsibility identified. We tried to make sure that the actions were quantifiable, but then also we wanted to identify sources and departments that need to be involved with that upfront. And then the fourth chapter is about implementation. So great, we have this plan with all of these goals and strategies and existing conditions. How do we make that work? So in there we have the project prioritization framework. And I'll get into that a little bit more. Corridors and connections were identified, preferred facilities for bicycles and pedestrians. And then we have broad projects listed in there, which is a different tactic than our previous plans. So vision, this is our new vision. And again, the goal here was to make it more inclusive. And this was, this language did go before the Multimodal Advisory Board at the end of last year, beginning of this year, and then it's also gone in front of our stakeholder group. So we've been, we've met with a stakeholder group three times now on portions of the plan. And that stakeholder group is made up of different organizations in town that have interest, including the Bid, Visit Durango, Los Compañeros, pretty much anybody that offers any sort of service in town. And so this is the vision that has come out of that effort and, you know, I won't read it, but it's there for all of you to see. So the data section of the plan, which is in chapter two, we start off with the demographics. Most of those demographics are coming from the American Community Survey, which fortunately we just had the 2020 census update, so that data is rather fresh. It also includes existing facilities. So what we're talking about there is bicycle transit and pedestrians, so sidewalks, bicycle facilities and transit routes. As well as street classifications. So we have three different kinds of street classifications, which are somewhat based on volume, speeds. And those are local collector and arterial. And then we have a section on education encouragement. So that includes our events and other safe routes to school programs, things like that. And then we have crash data. So our existing plan does not have crash data. One of the big components of inserting crash data is not only does it give us that baseline to understand where our community is, but it is also a requirement for this plan to be considered an action plan by the Federal Highway Administration, which opens us up to receive grants from the Federal Highway Administration, which fortunately we actually just received one, which will help kind of impact this a little bit more. And so those crash statistics also have bike and pedestrian crashes called out as well as fatal and serious injury crashes. We have affordable housing identified in the plan and the purpose of that is again to put a little more equity into how we prioritize projects. And then we have parking and apologize for the acronym, but TDM is Transportation Demand Management. And so what that's talking about is how do we get people to travel around Durango differently, to alleviate the need for more parking, but also to make our roads less congested, which also then reduces the need to expand on our existing roadway infrastructure. So implementation, and this is probably the heaviest part of the plan, and this is in chapter four. So the criteria framework, which you've kind of heard me mention a couple of times, provides an equitable approach to the project prioritization by basically giving different categories, different values. So we have fatal and serious injury crashes, which obviously are going to have a little bit higher rating on projects. So if we have a project that is on a road that has higher injury crashes and fatalities, then that's going to bump that project up in prioritization. Affordable housing is also on there. This idea of corridors and connections, which I'll just go ahead and drop down to, that identifies multimodal transportation connections and corridors. And what we mean by a connection versus a corridor. So a connection would be, for example, the Camino Underpass near 12th Street, that would be considered a connection. So you're crossing Camino to connect from one side to the other versus a corridor would be like Highway 160 West. So that could be thought of as an entire corridor or even Florida. And those connections and corridors are based on traffic movement. So we have a subscription to a data analysis software that allows us to look at how people are traveling around Durango, which is pretty amazing, to understand that a little bit better. Population and commercial density data, public input. So as I mentioned earlier in that outreach, we got a lot of public input about how they move and their concerns and needs. And then the other component to this is the Multimodal Advisory Board also provided us with data on corridors and connections. And so then we have proposed projects and those proposed projects align with the corridor connections were kind of pulled out of that. They were also pulled from the 2016 multimodal transportation plan. They were pulled from public input and, you know, just that needs assessment. And so with the proposed projects, we kept those at more of a broader level. And the purpose of that is, is, you know, so in the plan, we identified that we have completed about 70 improvements that were identified in the 2016 plan, and that was 70 out of 460 improvements that were identified in the 2016 plan. But those were so specific. So every time we do a project, sometimes those improvements that were called out in the 2016 plan weren't actually either able to be done or they weren't best suited. So instead, what we're doing with this plan is it's a more broad perspective of these proposed projects so that it doesn't, I apologize for saying, but I don't know a better one, pigeonhole us into a specific treatment. And it allows us more flexibility and allows us to be more holistic with our thinking as far as improvements goes. And also technology just changes quite a bit and frequently, especially with the advent of e-bikes, as we've all seen, that's really exploded recently. And so then the last component of the implementation section is the preferred facilities. And so what that is, is we went out to the public, we also went to the Multimodal Advisor Board and we said, hey, you know, we hear a lot about what kind of facilities you don't like, but what kind of facilities do you want to see? And we got that input from those folks and stakeholders and that's what we created with the preferred facilities. We also have worked with our Public Works, which includes Streets Division on, you know, maintenance and we're continuing that work. But we do kind of know what the preferred facilities now are for the public. And so that's a component of the plan. We do specifically say in there though, that, you know, just because that's a preferred facility, every context is different. So if we think of Forita Road compared to 32nd Street, those are very different roadways with very different constraints. So every case may not be a one shoe fits all. So we do have some flexibility in there. And the idea of how this plan is going to work is, you know, if a project comes up, it can go through the criteria framework, we can see how it's tiered. And so it doesn't have to just be in the plan. If a proposed project comes outside from the public's perspective or, you know, from other, some other body, we can take a look at it and be like, okay, how does this rank in the criteria framework? And then we can kind of just go through the process. Okay, what are the preferred treatments? It hopefully will provide more equity in the process, but also consistency. So as far as next steps, we have the plan currently online and we are kind of pushing to receive comments on the plan. We have a forum on the webpage and then we also have have it out to the stakeholder group as well to provide his comments. And so we're hoping to get comments back by November 21st. And then staff will work with consultant team and we will review it, get those comments implemented. And then, you know, unless something big comes up, we are hoping to have the plan back in front of you in December, on December 5th for adoption. But I am here for any questions.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Counsel questions?
Sorry, I have a really silly question. Just because the state has different funding mechanisms for highway, does that crash data include the highway corridor?
It does.
It does, okay. Wasn't sure if that would be like a negative impact on our, you know, funding potentially as a whole for some of those federal grants.
It wouldn't actually, if anything, identifying where we have crashes helps our funding efforts. Just because then it, you know, like if we do have a portion that's on CDOT Highway, we can work with CDOT specifically for funding that they may have more availability to. So for example, we have that 30th Street Connect project that put the mid-block crossing on North Main. That was largely funded by CDOT and was a coordination with them. So some of that data for some of the crash data that was pulled is actually from CDOT's database. So our Durango PD submits data to CDOT about crashes throughout our city. And so we have data from both PD and CDOT on that level.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have a question. I'm just pulling it up. You mentioned the, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate that. You mentioned the stakeholder group. I think the advisory board, you gave an update, you give updates when the multimodal advisory board was active. But there was not many discussion until the last time, I think it was in February maybe, when there was a discussion on the, on this plan. And I think there was quite some feedback from that board. And I'm not sure if everything was addressed. You mentioned other stakeholders too. When was the last time those stakeholders were involved and had discussions on the multimodal plan?
Two, two weeks ago.
Yeah. And that was bid or which one was that?
We have 26 people that we reach out to every time we do the stakeholder. I would say every time it's different folks that come, it's not always the same. So the last meeting, we had Bike Durango there, we had Durango Trails representative, we have Visit Durango representatives. We had Fort Lewis College representatives. And we had four core representatives. In the past, we've had, at other meetings, we've had Manna representatives, Southwest Center for Independence.
If someone in our community wants to attend or see the meeting, where, where would they have gone? Is the meeting informal or is it, how does these meetings take place? Because it used to be the map. So where do people go to? Sorry.
Yeah. So the stakeholder meetings, we specifically reached out to, basically we have a list of organizations in town and we emailed out and reached out to them specifically for the meeting. It was not, I guess, like a publicly posted meeting. It was specific to a listed group of folks that we have reached out.
Okay. So if, if, if anybody in our community wants to provide feedback, how would they go about?
So yeah, we have the, we have the draft plan on the webpage now and we have a comment form as well set up. And so that's going to be emailed out to everybody, you know, it's distributed as much as we can on social media. Yeah, all the normal avenues.
The purpose of that outreach is to comment on the plan now. Like Devin said, in 2022, that's when he did his really targeted outreach to the communities and he went to neighborhoods and had over 14 or maybe right at 14 meetings with neighborhoods and opportunities for people to weigh in. And all of that feedback that we got is reflected and representative in the plan.
Okay. And on the same topic as, as before, I sent an email before the meeting, I think this was also yesterday. It mentioned there were 70 improvements completed since the 2016 multimodal transportation plan. And I was just curious, how many improvements were recommended or listed?
460.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately I did see that email and we don't have the costs. So in the original plan, we didn't necessarily cost them out each one. And same with the new plan. So the approach in the new plan is, you know, again, these are broad proposed projects in the new plan. And so we did a low, medium, high rating on cost. And that's based off of the criteria framework. So low is like 50,000 and under, you know, it would be something, you know, kind of like a quick build project or something that's a lot easier to put down, you know, obviously a crosswalk. If it's just one single crosswalk, depending on context, could be relatively cheap versus, you know, a high cost would be in the millions.
Yeah. You said 460. I just typed it down. Or was it, did I misunderstand?
Yeah.
And then the multimodal plan is pretty heavy focused on, in my opinion, on roads and cars. I think that's maybe a little bit on the pity side. There is a map in there that shows the bike routes. And I was just wondering, would, how difficult would it be to show or to have a map available of the city, maybe in this plan, but also as general for our community, where you have very safe bike paths, meaning great vertically great separated, not the painted line on the road. So the Amherst River Trail being an example, or Riverview Drive. Is that, would that be complex to specify? Like, because you have a good drawing in there that shows all the bike paths.
Can you just clarify? So I mean, in that map that you're talking about, those separated paths are shown as a yellow dotted line. So they are shown separate of the rest of the bicycle facilities.
I missed that. So, so it does show the, for example, Riverview, where you have two, you have two lines, the yellow dot.
Correct.
Don't have it open for me. That, that is good. And then I remember from the map meetings that there was a strong encouragement to have connector and artery roads required to have vertically separated, vertically great separated bike slash pedestrian trails. And I remember the discussion where you said it's going to be a recommended improvement, I guess is the word. I can't remember the wording to be used. Is, is, is that still the same case? Or is there a way to anticipate that when we touch a road, that's going to be a key commuter road, artery road to have it up to a very high standard and not maybe depending on to aim high and not?
Yeah. So it is recommended on the arterial, not on the collector, on the collector. We call them out as buffered, but that doesn't negate using delineators. So we're still running into the issue with driveways when you get on collectors and how useful is it? How much more complicated is it? However, we do have that recommendation on the arterials in the plan. And then we also have a recommendation in the plan as far as the land use code update goes. And, you know, updating that code to reflect the public and the community's desire for separated bike paths. And, you know, I will say on the new Junction Street project, that's kind of something that we heard from the public and we are looking at with that new project. And, you know, I know that in the past presentation that Devin Schmidt gave, there was that discussion on the 200,000 from the 2015 half cent sales and use tax for multimodal purposes. That is to get equipment and to be able to maintain those type of facilities. So we're definitely moving the needle on that as per previous discussions.
Yeah, I really wish, I, I'm not sure if we're going to have another chance to discuss this multimodal plan, but I wish we were a lot more proactive in aiming for the highest standards and, and saying this is what our goal is, which would include every road, arterial commuter road needs to have vertically separated bike slash pedestrian path versus a stripe line that we as a council make sure that we have goals. And that says, for example, snow has to be cleared on those commuter trails within a certain amount of time, so that we are very proactive in making sure that multimodal is encouraged for our community. I, I, I don't see it in the multimodal plan. I think this plan is, is trying, but I think we can be more ambitious. And it comes at a cost, of course. And that's where you can say, well, council decides on appropriating that money. But I wish it was more ambitious, I think, because it's not just bikes and pedestrians, environment, ADA. But I wish it was more ambitious, I think, because it's not just bikes and pedestrian, it's environment, it's ADA, it's, it's for the lower income people. You can cover a whole range of people because of it.
So I think you will find some of that in the actions. That's where a lot of those items are laid out specifically maintenance and trying to respond, because we did hear that from folks, and we did put that in the action section of the plan. And, you know, as well as, you know, like one ambitious goal is, under goals, we have, one of the first objectives is to get a Vision Zero resolution passed, which is a pretty ambitious effort to aim and say basically that no fatality is acceptable, and that that's the goal. So I mean, this plan does, and you know, again, it, it kind of incorporates a lot of what the Federal Highway Administration determines as the action plan model, and going with that Safe System Approach, which again is, it's a pretty aggressive approach compared to anything that's.
You know, I would say that as staff, our commitment is to the safest facility, and that is our goal. If in the plan, we do list our preferred treatment, and then you'll find from time to time, our responsibility is, you know, contextual within a roadway and the different road users and the different priorities. So sometimes it might not be the most appropriate use to go for, you know, or we may not even be able to. There may be constraints that don't allow us to install what our preferred treatment would be. But our goal and our commitment, as stated in the plan, is to, where possible, install the best, highest treatments and facilities.
And then, for example, crossings over arterial roads, where the Amherst River Trail goes over a road, for example. Is there action plans or, or preferred treatments to say we go over or under? Is that part of the action plans?
It is not. The pedestrian section does talk a little more about some of that, but no, we did not put preferred, because those are so context-based, you know, for example, like where the Camino Underpass is, you have one side that's above and one side that's under centrally. So I mean, you know, it's, it's a give me or a gimme when you have a road that has two sides that are over, because it's great, and an overpass makes sense. That's how people use it, but you know, everything's just so context-based.
Well, I wouldn't say you go over or under. I would say you don't cross either. So that means either you go over or under.
So great separated, right.
But yeah, and that's, is that, is there something for council that we can encourage or make more ambitious for you to include in the multimodal plan? That you feel like, okay, if, if, if you really want to be ambitious, this is what we do.
So we're, we're, I've let it go on for a while, but this started to turn into a little bit of a debate or a positioning about policy. And with that type of thing, you're asking to give direction, which is inappropriate for a study session.
Well, stop here. Well, thank you for the explanation, presentation.
I have a question on North Main, speaking of bike dividers, given that it's CDOT. Do we have any control over, over that? It seems like one of the most dangerous roads, and I still see bikers on it all the time. It's fast traffic.
That would be CDOT.
That's CDOT, so we don't really, we can't manage that. But we did do the crossway with CDOT.
Right, exactly. And so, you know, they, they in the end have the say on how that gets put in.
Other questions from council? Great, okay. Good job. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. I think with that, looks like we are ready to adjourn the meeting. It's, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Early, thank you.